Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee to order, but I will turn it over first to Dr. Burnham.
Good evening, everyone. As a preliminary matter, this is Dr. Burnham, Superintendent of Schools. I'll do a roll call to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chair, Mrs. Carol Ashenbow.
Yes.
Vice Chair, Mr. Brian Leighton.
Yes.
Secretary, Mr. Anthony Skolbrini.
Yes.
Mr. Peter Beardmore.
Yes.
And Mrs. Laura Wazowski.
Yes.
And our recording secretary is not on the meeting, but she'll review the video recording and get us the minutes as well. So I'll turn it back to you, Mrs. Ashenbow.
Okay. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel and streaming on Facebook Live at a later time. And this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee is being conducted remotely. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, public meetings may be conducted remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town website on the COVID-19 Information Center page, accessed through the town manager's webpage, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberation of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lunenburg School Committee is convening by telephone conference, video conference, via Zoom app, Facebook Live, et cetera, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that you take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting business ground rules. We will turn to the first item on the agenda, but I just want to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our meeting and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will ask the members to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourselves. Finally, each role, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So the first item on our agenda, as it always is, is public comment. The school committee welcomes comments from the public. Comments addressing topics under the spoken authority of the school committee are welcome at either public comment section. Please remember, this is public comment, not discussion, and limit your comments to three minutes. Each public comment section has a maximum of 10 minutes. Comments about individual students prohibited by state and federal law. So are there any public comments? And seeing none, we will continue on to our next matter of business. And it is for us to meet and spend a little time with the candidate we have in front of us. Dr. Burnham, would you like to introduce her?
Yes, this evening, Mrs. Ellen Whitmore is here to meet the committee and tell us a little bit about herself and what brings her to the interest in this particular position in Lunenburg. And then she'll be happy to entertain any questions you might have. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. Whitmore to introduce herself and let the members of the committee and the public know why you're interested in this particular position here in Lunenburg.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ellen Whitmore, and I'm extremely excited to be a candidate for the position in Lunenburg. My family is, my husband's family is from Central Mass. And at this point in our lives, he is looking for us to move back to that area so he can be closer to his extended family. I am fortunate that my daughter is graduating from college in May and has already security position in the Central Mass area as well. So for us, this position would be, would be amazing for our family, for us to be where we really would like to be geographically. I had the good fortune a few years ago to work in Central Mass. I worked in Lester and I lived in Spencer, and I absolutely fell in love with, with the area and, and really would love to, you know, go back to a smaller district where I really feel that I can be, be part of a really great team and affect change for, for the positive for children.
Thank you very much, and thank you for coming and having a conversation with us. I'm going to turn this over to any comments from the committee. Does our committee have any questions or comments for Mrs. Whitmore? Mr. Skolbrini.
Hey, Ellen, thank you for coming and answering questions tonight. You are going to be in a position where you're hiring and firing people, you're dealing with employee issues. You're going to be the HR person. The HR person is always somebody that is disliked by the staff for obvious reasons. How are you going to deal with that sort of pushback in a small town? It's different when you're in a big school system, but like Liz Peterson literally knows everybody. So, you know, that's just an example. So how do you think that will change based on Lunenburg as compared to where you were from before?
So I handled HR when I was in Lester, which is a, which is a small community as well. I also grew up in a very small community and, and very well versed in small town. So I think really building relationships right out of the gate with, with stakeholders and people and also just really bringing the collaborative relationship building skills that I have to the position. Obviously, you know, with HR and, you know, employee matters, having really great, strong relationships with, with union leadership is critical as well as building leadership. And, and those are relationships that throughout my career I've fostered and have been able to really have strong ties to.
Thank you very much. Is, are there any other questions? Mr. Beardmore.
Thank you. Ms. Whitmore, a pleasure to meet you.
Great to meet you.
So I, I want to, I want to kind of come at, come at this from, from two lenses because this is effectively two jobs. And, and, you know, we, I think we as a school committee recommend, recognize the fact that there, there are two very distinct aspects to this job. And, and the, obviously, the tremendous critical importance of this role. From a, from a school committee member perspective, I view this role as instrumental in helping me to do my job, which is, you know, effectively to oversee the budget, to authorize the budget as well as to, to make policy decisions that there's, there's oftentimes a tie-in to, to funding, particularly when it comes to setting priorities and determining how we're going to go about implementing the policies that, that, that we, we resolve. How, how do you see your role in helping us to do that and also making recommendations? And then, you know, in some cases perhaps enforcing decisions that may not have aligned with your recommendations?
So first of all, I'm very cognizant of, of the fact that human resources, personnel and school finance are very deeply enmeshed together. Because really personnel is the largest cost center of, of the school budget and really does drive much of the budget and budget conversations year to year. In terms of, you know, there being times where it's important to, to review policies, make recommendations for, for changes to policies. That's something I've done throughout my entire career, bringing things to policy, to the superintendent and then to policy subcommittee. I review the MASC recommendations as well as, you know, what I know to be best practice as well. So I think that that is some insight that I do have. I've had the opportunity to do both roles together as well as separately in my career. And so I am very well versed in, you know, the difficulties of, you know, human resource policy and, you know, implementing things that I may not philosophically agree with, but that I know that are, you know, part of, part of my job and part of, you know, what is expected of me. So I'm very much aware of, of that, and I've had to navigate that before. And, you know, policy is policy and it is, you know, the school committee sets policy. And those are the things that I'm very, very cognizant of and also am comfortable, you know, with bringing recommendations for changes to policy.
So first of all, I, I, you know, obviously, the reason why you're here talking with us is that, you know, you're, you're extremely well credentialed for the role. So I, I think from a, from a credential standpoint, we've reviewed your credentials in, in executive session prior to this meeting. I, I guess the, my line of questioning is, is more not in terms of, you know, your credentials and the fact that you've, you've served in a role like this in the past or constructed in a, in a similar manner. But, but really in terms of your approach to working with the school committee to make sure that we are making the best decision possible. And perhaps if you could pull from, you know, an example or a personal experience, because, because you know the mechanics of the role and because you, you know, you understand your ways in and out of the, the actual execution. That's without question. What I, what I'm principally concerned about as a school committee member is that we ultimately get to the best decision and that you help us get there. And, and there's, that, that, in my experience is, is more art than, than science.
Okay. So relationships with school committee members is something that I've always have had really strong relationships with everybody on school committee, especially whoever is serving in the chair position as well as policy subcommittee chair. I think that having the relationships and the ability to navigate tough issues with the, with the individuals in those roles is important. In previous experiences I have had to have really tough conversations with a school committee chair who did not agree with, with the handling of a personnel matter. The teacher was someone, you know, that he, that they, his children had had throughout, you know, all of his children. So he had an established relationship with that, this individual, and it was a discipline matter. But policy said, you know, that this is what needed to happen. And we had to have some rather long conversations about it and and really had to sit with him several times so he could understand why the policy was, said what it did, why we were doing what we were doing. And that, you know, from the MASC perspective, that our policy was, you know, right in line with MASC. But we also talked about, you know, if, if we were to make changes to this policy moving forward, what the implications of, of those changes would be? What exposure would we open ourselves up to in terms of a possible litigation moving forward over this? As well as more difficulty taking progressive discipline over and, over this, this area that we were, you know, discussing. And it honestly, it was technology, acceptable use policy. So I hope I was clear.
No, you, you, you're, you're, you're being very clear. I, I, the, you know, the, the, just by way of example, well, no, I won't, I won't use an example. Let me just, let me just share with you my, my thinking and my concern on this from a, from a Lunenburg perspective. So number one, I think that it's absolutely essential that the person in this role comes at it from a, a very methodical approach, right? And, and I'm speaking more in terms of policy and budgeting than personnel matters because those are the things that we get involved in more than, more so than the day-to-day HR responsibilities. But it's very important that, you know, we kind of see around corners and, and see all sides of a matter and thoroughly understand the matters that are brought forth to us. And sometimes they're very routine, they're a, you know, they're a budget line transfer or something that we just need to know at a high level kind of what's going on. And there are other issues that are more consequential budgetary sort of decisions that we really kind of need to understand the ins and outs of. And, and it's critical for this role that you can kind of work us through these issues in a, in a thorough, but also, you know, appropriately sized a, a package of, of communication. The other side of the role though, as, as you mentioned, is quite sensitive when it comes to personnel. And, and we're a small system, we're a small town. And, you know, it's important that, that there is a fundamental sense of fairness and professionalism and, and, and frankly, that, that we're taking care of our people while we're doing all of that. And, and we're in the unfortunate situation of needing to do that while running pretty lean. And so these relationships are very important to us, both as individuals and collectively as a committee. So I'm sure you understand those sensitivities, but it, I would imagine having not done that job, that, that has to kind of remain in the forefront of your mind day in and day out and, you know, kind of dealing with the day-to-day of, of the difficult job that, that running an HR function, you know, entails.
It, it does, and that's, you know, our employees are our biggest asset. They're, they're with our, with our children, they're educating our kids. They are a huge part of our community in many communities, and I'm sure in Lunenburg is, is included in this. Most of our staff live in the, live in the community. So it is very important that everybody feels like they are being taken care of and that, you know, we really are doing the best possible way we can by our employees. You know, and that's why have really being visible and building relationships is important to me. You know, being able to help, you know, a, a, a first or second year teacher navigate, you know, coming into a district, you know, as a brand new teacher, to helping someone who's been, you know, in, in the district for quite a while, navigate, you know, a, a medical leave, you know, and then a retiring teacher navigate the retirement process. I mean, all of those are very emotional processes for some people and really need, you know, the ability to just sit and walk somebody through a process. And, and those are things I'm very cognizant of, that, you know, you really, especially in smaller districts, you tend to, you know, wear many, many hats. And those are things that, that I really feel that I'm, that I'm able to deliver to, you know, to staff and employees on, you know, being taken care of. And, you know, thinking outside of the box, but also to your point, drilling down on things enough and packaging it in a way that it's giving the school committee exactly the information they need to be able to make decisions.
Thank you.
Tony?
Ellen, why should we hire someone for this job that's never been a teacher?
So actually, I have a degree in elementary education. I consider myself an educator rather than a business person. I am part of the group from the late 90s that could not secure positions because there were too many elementary school certified teachers. I have a master's in education. I spend a great deal of time in the classroom. I'm actually have applications pending for doctoral and education leadership programs right now.
That's not responsive to my question.
Okay.
The, the question was, why should we hire someone for this position that's never been a teacher? I know that you have a teaching degree, but you've never been a teacher.
Okay. So as far as hiring somebody that has not been in a classroom, I have the business background, I have the finance piece. I have the, the practical HR experience, both in municipal government as well as the state government system. I've done HR my whole life, and I have a strong background in finance in the public and private sector. So I think that the lens that I, that I bring, you know, having not been in the classroom, but having worked in the private, private industry does bring a, a, a different lens to things.
Thank you.
Are there other questions from the committee? Mrs. Wazowski?
Um, can you talk a little bit about your communication style as far as communicating and sharing information, both with Dr. Burnham and with the school committee? Because I know you, you, you kind of walk a fine line. Because as HR, we don't get involved with HR issues dealing with individuals. But we do set policy and deal with the budget issues. So can you speak a little bit more about your communication and how that's been?
Sure. So typically I, you know, meet with or connect with the superintendent on a daily basis about budget, about, you know, HR, personnel matters, just about anything that's going on in the district. Because almost everything that goes on in the district does have some implication to either finance operations or personnel. In terms of communication with school, with school committee, I provide regular updates on the budget. I provide memos relating to where we are with spending, with, with the proposed policy changes. I do meet with chairs and budget subcommittee and, excuse me, policy subcommittee chairs on a regular basis. You know, provide really comprehensive reports on, you know, enrollment or other areas that really do drive the budget and do drive decision-making of the school committee. So I tend to over communicate, if anything.
Um, have you, have you visited Passios and seen, seen the building yet?
I have.
Okay.
Hey, any other questions from the committee? Mr. Skolbrini?
You had expressed interest in some of your application material in ultimately becoming a superintendent. How do you see your job now fitting into that career goal?
So I think the position right now really does lend itself to, to, to the foundation work for being a superintendent. Ultimately, superintendents are responsible for, for everything. And really, the biggest foundation that, that the superintendent is responsible for is, you know, is budget, is personnel, human resources, operations, those components of the district.
So is you, you're basically thinking that this is the, like, this is a job that will make you better suited for that next job?
I think that this job would make me better suited for, you know, for, for this job. It would make me, you know, it would give me a, a strong foundation, you know, to lead a, a district ultimately, if I decide to be a superintendent someday. I still have quite a ways left in my career.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, my question has to do with this. We've worked really hard over these past few years under Dr. Burnham's leadership to nurture and grow a team environment. How do you see your role on this team? Where, where do you think this particular position fits in?
So I think, first of all, it's really important to, to be part of the team. I think that with this position, because so much of what goes on in a district does, does tie back to, to finance and, and personnel and human resources, I think that it's important for, for me to be very collaborative as part of the team and to really understand all issues that are, that are going on and really hone in and really dig in to get background on things and, you know, do my own due diligence. So I can really make, you know, informed recommendations and support people, you know, during the decision-making process.
And in, in our district, you're talking about working with the budget subcommittee. School committee is not included on that? That would be, Dr. Burnham sets that up within her team and then her team presents to us what they have discovered. And then we work from there, just, just so you know, most, most anything we get goes to the superintendent.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you would discover that for sure. And that, I think that was really all I wanted to ask about. If I don't see any other questions from anyone else, is there someone that would like to make a motion regarding this candidacy? Oh, you know, I should do first. Did you have anything you want to say last, Mrs. Whitmore? I should have thrown it back at you, sorry.
Okay. Just that I'm, I'm excited about the opportunity. I am looking to, you know, relocate with my family and, you know, spend the rest of my career in, in Central Mass and, you know, and hopefully in Lunenburg. I'm, you know, really excited about the prospect. I like small towns, I grew up in one, and, and I really like the feel. I've spent quite a bit of time out in Lunenburg over the last month, just, you know, driving around and visiting, you know, local shops and things and really, really have felt, you know, at home in the community.
Great. Okay, thank you.
So if, if I could just share a thought here.
Your thing.
I'm not sure I'm going to wrap this into a motion, but maybe.
Okay. You can get started.
I'm thinking out loud, as you know, I tend to do. So hiring for a position like this is a real, being a school committee member in this particular role is a real challenge. At least I, I feel that. And, and my, my reasoning for this is that, you know, Ms. Whitmore has presented herself in a, in a very good fashion. I, I, I have no reservations in terms of her presentation. There, everybody is going to have their strengths and weaknesses, you know, particularly in terms of just where their resume has brought them over the course of their career. And I think that, you know, she is extremely well qualified in terms of the, the, the technical qualifications that are needed to, to be able to do this job successfully. But, but largely, this is a role that is as much art as science, in, in, in my view. And, and the art is something that's very difficult to try to scratch below the surface and get a real clear understanding of how that, you know, what, what that artistic style really is. And, and it, it could not be more important in a, in a town like Lunenburg to be able to be pretty darn artistic, to, to, to probably run the metaphor longer than it should have been run. That said, I have a lot of confidence in our superintendent and her ability to help us in, in navigating this. And, and personally, I, I feel comfortable in extending the authority to her to be able to make a determination and to, if, if it comes i- if it comes to that, to, to finalize a contract. So it's not a motion yet, it's a statement, but maybe it's to, you know, get a feel for where my other committee members are prior to making that, that motion.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Leighton?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to authorize the superintendent to engage with Ms. Whitmore on behalf of the Lunenburg School Committee to secure her employment with Lunenburg Public Schools.
And do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right then. So then we need any further discussion first? I always forget that part. Seeing none, then we need a roll call vote. Dr. Burnham?
Mrs. Brzowski?
I didn't hear that one. Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, then, yes.
Mr. Schoolenbrining?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Arshambo?
Yes. So we will move on from there and we wish you the best.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited.
Thank you.
Pleasure meeting you and look forward hopefully to working with you in the near future.
Yes, I'm very excited. I look forward to meeting all of you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank you for joining us in this manner through the airways here. And so that, oh, I got public comment again. Do we have any future, any further public comment? Well, seeing none, I would take a mo- yes, Mr. Leighton?
We'll make the motion to adjourn at 6:03 PM.
All righty then. A second?
I'll second.
Oh, everybody seconds. All right, then a roll call vote.
Mrs. Brzowski?
Yes.
Mr. Schoolenbrining?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Arshambo?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.